Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone this afternoon and call the order, the study meeting of West Valley City Council. It is February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. We are starting at four thirty P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Virtually, we have Councilman Fitziamanu. And we have at the table Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Moon and myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Powell and our city recorder, Miss Kevin. We have the minutes from February seventh alternate council for discussion or motion.
Move for approval of those minutes.
Okay, we have motion and second, all in favor, please say aye. Those pass. We do not have need to for the review of the regular meeting because it's been canceled. And we'll start with resolution. Twenty-three thirteen and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the twenty twenty-three asphalt overlay project that we recently bid. We opened bids towards the end of January. We received five bids for this project. This is to do a little over two and a half miles of residential roads. Down just off of thirty-two-hundred west near forty-four-hundred south in those neighborhoods. We had five bids. We got a competitive bid from Black Forest Paving of just shy of one point four million dollars. We have never actually contracted with them, but they have done work for Granger Hunter. They've done work in the city. We've been around them. We've just never directly contracted with them, but we do feel comfortable giving moving forward with this contract. So our recommendation is to approve that contract and authorize the Public Works Department to spend up to one point five million on change orders.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to resolution twenty-three dash fourteen and we'll turn the time over to Ms. Day for this presentation.
Good evening, Council Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here to talk about this. Project, you probably recall a number of months back, we came with a contract for a grant that we had received. For a challenge course on the properties that we purchased just across the street to the east of Westview Park. So actually, can you go to the other slide, the other one first? So just as a reminder, here's the the challenge course ninja course, whatever you would like to call that. So this this particular, so this particular one, we had a grant. What we're asking for in this resolution is our match for that, which will pay for the actual challenge course. The turf that's underneath, you can just scroll back up there, drop me to, here we go. The curbing and everything that goes into place for that. So that's what this pays for now, and we're about ten to twelve weeks out from getting the equipment in. Which gives us enough time to do the construction documents and everything to actually. You know, kind of finish up the area a little bit more, which is on the next one that I'll have Eric put up on that. But before we do that and kind of show you what the finished product for the park could look like. I don't know if you have any questions specific specifically for this. This was the Utah, one of the Utah outdoor recreation grants that we received for just over one hundred ninety-one thousand. The two hundred and four thousand will come out of park impact fees. So that's how that will be paid for. This is the design. So one of the things that we needed to do. Was to look at the best way for this to fit in close proximity to the Utah Salt Lake Canal Trail. That was one of the defining things that the grant really wanted to have. So if you kind of look on the the master plan, so the the section that that finishes that whole area off. To the left of that is west, so across that street is Westview Park. To the north or up at the top is where the trail crosses through in that area and also the canal. So hopefully that's that's helpful there to show you. You could see phase one and phase two to the right. So phase one would complete everything that needs to be done around the challenge course. Phase two is the parking lot. And then the completed park, I know this was a question last time we came is what would it look like? That would complete both of those properties that were purchased by the Mitchell family and the Crane family. Directly to the right, to the east of that. Is the property that we got a number of years ago from UDOT that's more of a soccer fields, open field space area. And to the east directly of that is the Mountain View Corridor, just to kind of put it in perspective there.
So any questions? Okay, so the parking lot will be put in in phase one?
That's what we're hoping for. We're we're go, we're getting the construction documents together or the landscape architect is so that we can go to bid. And then we have an estimated cost on the two right now. We'll have to see how those both come through. We can use impact fee money for that, but as you know, there are certain parks that some of that money is already earmarked for. So but we would like to complete the parking lot as well. The nice thing is even though this area also will have the restroom and those types of features. They can go across the street to Westview where there is some parking and restrooms and those types of things as well. So it's not terribly far, but yeah, we would like to have that parking lot as part of this.
So we're not putting the restrooms in in this phase one or the parking lot?
The part, well, phase one is literally just to complete where the challenge course will be put that's on this resolution right now. It will finish that. So the challenge course will be installed and then everything else will be completed as you can see and kind of read on here. The the concrete walk, the the curbing, all of that, apologize. Then depending on the cost, we could also put phase two, which is the parking lot there as part of it. So you can kind of see. You can kind of see over here where that is, right? Those areas right there and then the remainder would be the final phase for the final master plan to finish that whole area. And it really comes down to, like I mentioned, the impact fees, what's available. And what we're able to use and still be able to stay on task with the parks that we're, we've already started. Sunset Hills, Wood Hollow, Rocky Ridge that will be finished up this, you know, kind of late spring this year, those types of projects. Also, it will depend on the cost, how much that will increase with construction as we get closer to all of these projects. If you recall, after Sunset Hills, Wood Hollow is the Newton Farms Park. So we don't want to necessarily slow those projects down because we know how important those are to the neighborhoods. But certainly that's a decision that can be made. And the design, I can say, is not one hundred percent set in stone in some of these other features. There's a reason why we have those on there, but it's certainly open to discussion later on.
So the picture to the left is what you want to do eventually. All you're really going to do is the top right?
The top right for sure. And we're hoping to also do if the if the numbers come in as they've been projected. Then we want to do both and we would bring that to you at that time. And and again, we're probably. One to two months out probably before we can bring that to you. It gets us in that timeframe, right, of being able to bid it, get it back within that ten to twelve week period of when the equipment and everything will be delivered. So it'll it'll be tight, but that's our goal.
Okay.
Why is this park in front of Newton Farms being completed?
The that's why the only element right now is just where the challenge course goes because we received this grant funding for just under two hundred thousand dollars to install this. The matching grant.
Time for him to use the grant money.
We need to use it by, I think it's spring of next year. Needs to be completed by then.
Yes, I just don't really like piecemeal. Part of it.
Right, and we agree, we would like to finish the entire thing. We agree with that. It's just a.
So you have no figure of what it would cost to complete the entire?
The entire area right now, I can tell you with the numbers that we've been given, and again, we have to go to bid. So the entire thing would be about one, just over one point three million.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions?
I'd like to follow up with their question.
Yes.
So for sure. Phase one, we're gonna do it, but phase two, we have to look at our number, try to figure it out, right?
Correct.
Yeah, how long can it take us to finish the phase one?
To finish phase one? Uh, so pardon? Yeah, it will be before fall. I can't give you a specific date, but but once we get the bids back again, if we're, let's say we're twelve weeks out for the equipment. That's about the same time that we'll get everything else processed and in. So three months and then they would be able to start construction at that time and it's a small area as you can see. So that's a. Yeah.
Remember Jake, hey, nothing from him, so okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, we now have resolution twenty-three dash fifteen and we'll turn the time over to Chief Jacobs.
Good evening, calling Jacobs, Chief of Police. I am here before you tonight to request authorization to accept a grant from the state of Utah. In the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. It's part of House Bill twenty-three from the twenty twenty-two legislative session. For first responder mental health services. This will enhance our existing program. By the purchase of. Some additional. Equipment and software that will enhance diagnostic ability.
Okay. And this is for the employees, not for the victim out of the kits?
Correct. This is for in-house LCSW for employees.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jake. All right, now our new business, we have application S M I ten twenty twenty-two. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman and he is on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. This application, and I appreciate.
I can't hear you. Somebody needs to unmute him.
Steve, are you on mute?
It looked like he was muted.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me now?
I can hear him. Can you all hear me? So we can hear each other, but not you.
Well, Jake will get the presentation and nobody else. They're figuring it out. Yeah, sorry.
There's still an issue?
There we go.
I believe we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
You might have to turn up yours, get closer to your speaker. We can barely hear you.
Okay, is this better?
Not much. You might have to use your outside voice.
Eric, you turned it down with my Nancy was up, so.
Okay, now try it, Mr.
Okay, is that better?
No.
Not better.
Hang on.
It's really loud before.
Okay.
All right, any better?
There we go, that might be. Okay, Mr. Lehman.
Okay, is that better? All right, good. Thanks for your patience. So this application is a final plat request from John Baird. This is a property that the council recently rezoned a few months back on twenty-two-hundred west, roughly thirty-nine oh nine south. We have just a couple of illustrations for you. So most everything in this area is zone R one eight. Property of the south is still zoned ag. The next slide is just a zoomed in version. It does have an existing single family home that you can see there. As well as a detached garage that will be removed as part of the subdivision in order to build a new home in the back. The next slide is just a couple of photos of the property. So this property right now is relatively unkept. There is no formal improvement along twenty-two-hundred west, so we will extend curb gutter sidewalk, excuse me, from the north to the south. That large tree will be removed. The next slide is just a different angle for the home. So during the development agreement that the council approved. The property owner did agree to improve and enhance the existing home by painting and upgrading. And of course landscaping will be a a large component of that as well. And the next slide is an illustration of the home that's right to the north of that. This gentleman just did the same thing a number of years ago, was subdivided with a flag lot in the back. And the improvements to the existing home, so we're expecting similar results of this application. And then the last illustration is of the plat itself. So it is a flag lot subdivision. The front lot is eighty-three hundred square feet. The back lot is just over twelve thousand square feet. The driveway will be on the north side. So we'll end up with a new home in the back of the existing home that will be renovated and improved. And that is our report.
Hey, thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yes. Do they have a basement, Steve?
Yes, they will. The groundwater at this location is approximately nine feet below existing surface. So they will be able to do full basements on the property.
Okay, you know cucumber by court right there, not far away, see that? Yeah, they have some problems there, a couple houses, basement, the water leaking inside, so maybe to take a closer look for that.
Yeah, I'll identify that with our building inspections when they do a. Foundation will double check and make sure the groundwater is not evident. When they get to that point, I appreciate knowing that.
Yeah, no problem. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, thank you, and we'll now move on to S M I thirteen twenty twenty-two. And that one is yours, Mr. Lehman as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This application is a request from Ryan Halder, who is representing the property owner here. Looking to consolidate property at the corner of thirty-five-hundred south, sixty-four-hundred west. So at the present time, this property is a hardware store, the Southport Hardware Store, been there for many, many years. That business is going away and a new proposed convenience store fueling station will be occupying the property. The next slide is just a zoomed in version, so you can see the two properties in question. These folks wanted to do a subdivision as as opposed to a consolidation. So this is why it is before the city council. We do have a couple of illustrations for the property. This is looking at the the store itself from the southeast corner of the property. And the next slide is looking from the looking west along thirty-five-hundred south. And the next slide is looking along sixty-four-hundred west. This access point that you see here will actually be eliminated. So the site will have two access points for the new convenience store. And then the next slide is of the plat itself. So really a consolidation, we're just taking the eastern portion of that property. Consolidating it into one lot, which is approximately one acre in size. So in summary, the application here was consolidate the two parcels and dedicate right of way. Or UDOT along thirty-five-hundred south as well as a small UTA piece for a bus stop. And will end with a single lot for a future commercial use. That is our report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council?
See the hardware store go.
I know. Has been there a very, very long time. Hey, I do not see any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time back over to Mr. Wilson or a consent. Well, is it anything big and fancy? Consent agenda?
Ma'am, I would like him to come and just kind of. Reiterate how we handle this in the forty-one-hundred south project. There's a couple of people here.
Okay.
It's a little different than the normal temporary construction easements you seen coming.
For sure. Yep. So as you know, Parkway Boulevard is a federally funded project, as was forty-one-hundred south. With these federally funded projects, anytime we acquire any type of right of way, whether it's a permanent easement. Actual right of way acquisition or temporary construction easement, all of that has to go through the UDOT process, which is fairly lengthy and somewhat time consuming. From the time that we actually meet with property owners to the time that they actually receive a check. So in an effort to streamline that and just do the number of parcels we get with these these larger reconstruct projects. To streamline the ones that just have a temporary construction easement, we're obviously if we're buying right of way, if we're getting a perpetual easement for the city for long term. Those will still be coming to council, but our recommendation is on these temporary construction ones, just where we're doing minor impacts to front yards that we got to, you know, get the contractor in there to get access to fix their front yards and so forth. On these temporary ones, we would just request that the Public Works Department be given authority to accept those on behalf of the city, just to streamline the process. And to get these residents paid a lot faster to when we actually meet with them and talk to them from the time that they actually receive the the payment for the temporary construction easement. So our request is on these T C Es, just to try to streamline that and and allow us to to approve those. Similar to what we did on forty-one-hundred south. This is not, this is not a new thing. We we did the same process on forty-one-hundred south.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, our legislative update. Mr. Shirts has gotten stuck in a meeting. So we're skipping him. And then our capital improvement, I mean expenditure plan. Are you taking that or are you?
No, ma'am, although I have a little information I could share, my understanding is capital expenditure plan is one of the items that the council wanted to talk about. So I don't really have any presentations or proposals, not knowing exactly what that is, but kind of predicting, or at least trying to get ahead of what that might be. I have had Dan working on a iteration or modification of what we do across our capital improvement lists. Both in public works, which he would be doing naturally, but then I'm also having him go to the other departments and assemble that by them. So by project list, timing, source of funding, and then the idea I would have is just, just from my impression of what you might want to know. Is where would that fall from a funding timing standpoint, like? What would we be proposing to do in the next year? How far out then would we be in three and five years? But I don't know if that hits really the mark. But that's what I'm kind of having Dan doing right now. Other than that.
Yeah. I know that's my, I mean, that's my request. I I don't have. I mean. I think the idea would be that we have. Schedule of improvements that we would want to do or need to do. Over the next five to ten years, I mean, I see the the ninja course and that my my one thought that I almost raised is how long does the equipment last? And are we planning for replacement of that? And so that's, that's just. Another part of that, but uh, so I think. It needs to be a thorough look at everything we're going to have to replace or. Prepare in the next ten years and start making plans for that. You know, in my own house, I know I'm going to have to replace my water heaters in the next couple of years and. It's just part of the plan. I got a plan. What are we doing as far as that goes on the city?
Oh, okay. All right, well. Let me give you a little, just kind of broader commentary on as opposed to just the capital improvement list or expenditure list, like I was talking about that Dan's assembling. So. There are a couple of things that I want to bring into the the budget discussion this year, which I mentioned last week, a little bit of money around four hundred thousand a year for. Parks and Recreation, a little bit of money, four hundred thousand a year for public facilities. The question would arise, why would I want to propose them as opposed to any other? And the reason for that is this. For many of the functions that we already do, whether it's stormwater or whether it's roads or whether it's. Sanitation. We do have a good. Both funding stream and fund balance in our capital improvement program that if we have larger or smaller programs. We do and are able to fund a lot of those capital expenditure and repair and replacement type things. I'm thinking of the water heater as I'm kind of trying to.
Well, another example, another example would be the deck at the ridge.
Right, yeah.
The H B A C at the cultural center. I mean, those are recent ones that we just.
Right.
We just talked about.
Right, right.
But where they're at on the schedule?
Where are they on the schedule and and, okay, so we know what's on the schedule for this year or next year? And do we, are we allocating enough funds to cover that? That's two pieces need to be together, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm wondering if we actually need two reports. One for new projects, the capital expenditures that like the new play equipment at the park. And then a separate schedule with the repair and maintenance.
Schedule of when we're going to have to replace.
Yeah, so the pump at the bottom of the well at a golf course is a ten year. Let's not wait till fifteen and it fails and it's an emergency. Let's know that in ten years, we're going to replace it and have the funds sitting there waiting for it.
Yeah.
So continuing on with kind of what I was explaining, most of these areas that we're talking about either have a dedicated funding source that we do already do that sort of thing. And so it would be fairly easy to go back and show you, you know, this pump or that or whatever. But in a couple of areas, parks and public facilities. Because they are traditionally operated on a more shoestring basis, they don't have ongoing funding streams that are dedicated to them like sanitation fees or like state road funds. We just have not had the budget budgetary means to do that. So how have we taken care of that? We've taken care of that out of. Some small repair and replacement funds that are available, but don't cover all the costs, like for example. some small repair and replacement funds that are available, but don't cover all the costs, like for example, the fitness center has a repair and replacement fund. The Maverick Center has a repair and replacement fund. But the parks for playground equipment, for example, was brought up. We don't have uh repair and replacement funds for those. But this amount of money that um I'm proposing in this budget year would go a long way to cover some of those smaller uh improvements like that. Um, there's another point I wanted to make along that same line. I think I covered the repair and replacement fund for some of the others. Oh. So small stuff like that, let's say you're repairing or or replacing a playground piece of equipment. This four hundred thousand a year would go a long way to covering that sort of thing. And that could range from playground equipment to parking lot repairs to HVAC pieces and um other facilities. But what it's not going to cover, you'll still see uh us coming back to you for with lease proposals, for example, are the uh golf course um cart fleet, which comes up about every five years or so. And when it does come up, we do have an operational amount of money on an expenditure basis to pay for it from a lease standpoint, lease purchase standpoint, but we don't have enough money there to just buy the thing outright. Okay, so that gets me to my third point, and we had a little bit of a allusion to this last week. So we've been fortunate enough over the last couple, three years to be able to build that C I P fund to a level that we not, we don't normally have. I would say on a normal years basis, we might have one, two, three, maybe even four million dollars in there for lucky. We've been able to um we've been uh able to build that to where it is now. I said nine last week. It's really more like eight point three since then, as uh Jim made me wear a couple of other projects that are committed to, but um, the point is that you can also schedule in the same way you're asking Scott, some of that fun funding, although I would say there are a lot of kind of more urgent or immediate um needs. And by immediate, I'm talking one construction season, two construction seasons that we could bring you program um uh proposals for. Or we could just kind of leave it there as a an amount at some particular level. And apply to, apply that against the schedule that we bring in. So there are multiple ways we address this right now. Some of them are a lot more um secure and funded and scheduled in a way that that makes sense. And then others are not, just because we just plain haven't had the budget to do that over the years. Operational concerns have taken precedence over those, and so we haven't been able to do that. We can do them now, and that's why I've brought a lot of that, those um individual items over the last few months to try to take some of those ones that have been needed for a long time and use the C I P funds to take care of them, but we don't have to do it that way. So if you did want us to bring us back a schedule that way, that we can do that.
If we start with a schedule and then if you can give us the balance, the C I P funds and what those can be used for.
Mm hmm.
I think that's maybe where we start. But.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Especially on like big ticket items. By engineer.
You have a minimum amount of projects like a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, half million? What is your? Because our last one ended up having amounts that I didn't think were appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, it was a comprehensive list.
Well, it was three thousand dollar toner, which that should be a yearly absorption, not a C I P.
Right.
Operating expense.
Yeah, that's an operating, not a capital improvement. So just that's why I'm saying, do we need to put a hundred thousand and up?
I think a hundred thousand up is fine, and I think easily identified as a capital improvement.
Right.
Not an operational expense.
Okay.
I also think we need to have a yearly reminded us. So maybe like the pump right here, you know, you can remind us uh five more years or we we're going to kind of surprise, you know, so I'm sure nasty, so four more years for this thing. Yeah. It'd be nice to have something like that, so we won't get any surprise or something. Yeah.
Okay. So maybe do a repair and replacement after we do this one, start with this first and then move on to the other?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other thing, anything else on that one?
It's another, they're the same, they're the same capital improvement and capital repair and placement. I call it.
You call it the same?
Other, but it's.
Yeah, so you want the repair replacement in with the new build?
Well, I think that's what most of it is.
Okay.
Um, whether it's, I mean, capital replacement or capital improvement is H B A C at the at the cultural center, any repairs or rehab we do it. The theater, the the bridges at Stone Bridge, the deck at the ridge. The netting at this, at the golf course. I mean, all that is stuff that we could have scheduled. We're going to have to replace this in ten or fifteen or twenty years and just had it um on the plan instead of
A last minute ask.
Doing a program mod. And and maybe it was on some schedule at some point, right? But um to us, it feels like an emergency every time it comes to the budget opening.
Yeah, and and again, so for example, the four hundred thousand or so for parks, the four hundred thousand or so for public facilities would take care of a lot of that, which you wouldn't even, I mean, you'd still see anything over thirty thousand from a procurement authorization anyway, but you just would have to um worry that we were asking for that from um fund balance.
Then your comment on the fire truck, and that's another thing to look at is it don't last forever. So let's let's our plan over the next ten years on those rotations.
So fire trucks are a good um question for and and a little bit of a different situation because they're so expensive piece by piece. We do have a funding stream that we've been able to replace them as we needed uh from buyer sources. But they're way too expensive to buy um for cash each time. So we always end up at least purchasing those usually on like a seven year or ten year basis.
Okay.
The other problem I have with the fire trucks now is we just plain can't get them. So we're asking for authorization, like we have authorization from the council for one right now that we just got word last week. We probably can't delay take delivery on for a year or so, a further year than what they've promised us. So that plays into the issue as well.
Well, thanks for the clarification, because in my world, we separate them. New build, repair and replacement, two different plans. So you want it all kind of in one?
What would be?
Which I don't have a problem with that.
Build here though.
Like the new park. Finishing off our parks.
Um, that's the next item on the
Okay.
A park, not not here, but you know, on the discussion list of parks and.
Yeah, so.
What do we need once our schedule there? Yeah, that's.
So. So you understand his way?
I believe so, and the drawing line was a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred thousand above. Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which is budget reduction proposals. And that one would have to come one hundred percent from staff?
That was the request.
Okay. Some ideas?
Yep. Okay, my dear.
So anything more kind of clear direction wise or goal or what are we looking for? I mean, we do that every year internally anyway, before we get you a budget recommendation. So is there something that we'd be looking for specifically or?
Or maybe just share that conversation?
Okay. All right.
Then you know where they've cut, right? Is that a good enough start?
Start.
I can tell you from a net standpoint, uh particularly in the year that that we're in right now. We can find cuts that would accrue to the net budget, but you're going to see a overall budget um increase recommendation. So it's fun to make sure that that's not.
Let me just remember back on my thought process and I put that on the.
Yeah, let me give you a uh an example. So the capital um repair and replacement funds I'm talking about, those will be increases of four hundred thousand each will have significant utility increase request because just like we're receiving on the revenue side, because prices have gone up so much, we're seeing big utility increases. Um other things along that line. And when we talk about a reduction proposal standpoint, it's good to remember that let's use this year's um general fund budget as an example. So we were a little over ninety nine million. Let's call it a hundred million. Of that eighty seven billion is personnel. On top of that, you're north of ten million in debt service and and already fixed payments. So on top of that, we already have fixed um operational costs for like insurance or gasoline, power, all those sorts of things. So by the time you get to what's actually operational sort of variable cost there, it's not very much. It's a hundred. So if we were to do any kind of significant proposals from a reduction standpoint, it's and again, I'm not sure what we're talking about from a significant standpoint.
Significant, and what does that look like?
Then you're talking about personnel.
Okay, and then so then what does that look like as far as what services or items that we need to reduce or cut? That's so that we have an idea of what we could do.
Okay.
So I heard an illustration the other day on the radio that a lot of um government entities will have a need, start a program, have a need, start a program, and sometimes after ten years, they're duplicate programs and they can be merged and be more cost effective. So there's different things that when you go back and really dig down to the weeds and there can be savings when it's not as obvious just at first glance.
And like Wayne said, we we have costs that keep going up and up and up.
Yeah.
Well, so so we just keep pushing that onto the taxpayer and increasing taxes every couple of years, or do we figure out that we don't need some of these services and and pare some of those down so that we don't have to increase taxes every couple of years? We probably have a report of how what the budget was ten years ago and what it is now, and it's probably gone up five million dollars every year. Well, if if that keeps going, we're going to have to raise taxes every couple of years and I would rather see us look at options and opportunities to reduce budget so that we can.
Okay. Um, if we cannot find where we're going to start with or where we're going to cut up budgets, maybe just hire a consultant company and then they can take a look at it. You can, you know, say multiple ways to do that.
Okay.
You know, uh about a third of our revenue comes from property taxes. But that that will not increase unless we increase it. You know, sales tax, about a third of our revenue comes from sales tax and and that increases naturally with uh with inflation. Because if if prices go up five percent, then our percentage of that is also a bigger amount, but property taxes doesn't go up, even though property values increase unless we specifically vote to to uh to increase the property tax.
New growth will also increase the property tax. New build is another opportunity too.
Right, but every time we have a new build,
Right.
we have an increase in services that's required as well. And so, but but our costs um personnel costs, the vehicles, those all increase with inflation and and uh property tax is a very stable revenue source, whereas as sales tax isn't as stable. And so I think it's a mistake to not increase property tax regularly so that we can sustain the services and the budget that we have. We should keep property tax as a as a important revenue source and and as a that same portion of our of our revenue stream. Because it pays for important services that we have to pay more to to get every year.
So do you feel it's a waste of time to see if there's any cuts available so that we don't have to raise them?
I'm not saying that.
Okay, good. Okay.
But what I am saying is if the um saying we don't need to to increase taxes every couple of years is not a good strategy. Unless we want to cut services. And I think I think we provide services that are needed and and desired.
I think it's just the fact, let's let's put that out on the table and look at the cost benefit of of all of those.
Yeah.
And then at least we're having a a discussion about it instead of just passing the budget and raising taxes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not against looking at
Okay.
ways to to cut the budget. But uh I don't, I don't think that never increasing property taxes is a is a good long term plan for our city.
And I agree. We're not, I'm not saying we're never going to raise property taxes ever again. Just saying that we need to be more feels like we need to be more thoughtful on um our services and our discussion with budget. So that um we can feel good about raising taxes when we do.
Okay. Seeing no more conversation on that one. We'll go to D, the bond rating.
I brought up this issue. Um, I I remember in May, we received that report when we applied for a bond, um and it had a lot of great information. And I thought that uh that some of that information would be appropriate for us to to review at our strategic plan when we're looking at at the important information of our city. So um
So do you want that brought forward as a communication item and we can just discuss it in a study session? Those two items?
So some of the things that were on there on page eight, it talks about our um index crime rate in twenty twenty was thirty eight point two five reports per thousand people compared to forty eight point six three in twenty ten. I would like to see that as a graph for over time and and see how it changes each year. I think that's an important piece of data for us to 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 look at.
Okay.
Um, on page nine, it talks about the land use in West Valley. What percent is residential and industrial? Um, that would be good information to to just see how how those things are changing over year, over the years. Page eleven, there's West Valley City Educational attainment population twenty five years and over. I think and and it shows the population is changing. Page twelve, it has the household median adjusted gross income and how that's changing over the years. Page thirteen shows a what ratio of houses are owner occupied versus renter occupied. And I think that would be something that we would want to to look at and how that's changing over the years.
So do you want staff to to prepare us a either just a handout or have an actual presentation that we can ask questions? And then do you want this added to any information like to our budget report or?
Yeah, so like every year we get the budget report. These things would be good to look at as well as as we're considering policies.
Okay. So.
There you go. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to ask maybe what you're just, whether you want a presentation or just a hard copy exam on this and that that could be added to the budget. And then.
I don't know.
Okay, what's your suggestion, Mr. Powell?
I was thinking maybe I could get with you and get the more, because I kind of went and looked back through the bond ratings pre- uh presentation too, and if I could get with you and get a list of which ones specifically you're interested in. There's a couple of different ways we could present them. I check them against the budget report and see whether they would fit appropriately. We could put them in our weekly report and send councils or ones that. And I might check them against the budget report and see whether they would fit appropriately, we could put them in our weekly report and send councils, there are ones that are of. Particular interest, however you wanna see it. But I guess first step would be it, I'd just get with you and see which ones specifically.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And is this mainly for our information or you want it passed, I, you want it available for the residents?
I think for us.
Okay, mainly us?
Yeah.
Okay.
It wouldn't be bad for the residents to have it too.
No, and that's why I was wondering, because they can get on and look at the budgets and anything in that report. So that's what I didn't know if you wanted it in there for them.
Yeah.
We'll do us first and then you can decide.
Well, I, I think whatever we do for us should be available to everybody too.
Okay. Easy enough?
Yep.
Okay, and then limits on fund balance.
That was mine as well, and limit isn't really the word that I was going for, but I think that we should have a discussion about. About that, the fund balance level, you know, there's a. There's an amount that we're allowed, we can't go beyond a certain amount.
Twenty five percent or something.
And uh. I know that when we've had. Rough years, that, that fund balance has gone down as it should.
Right.
But uh, I wondered if, if we should talk about what. What the goal should be in, in good years and, and uh. And see, see where that's at as a percent of our. Of our budget and, and set that as a policy. Not as a. It's gotta be right here, but. But. Where should it be at and? And uh, what's, what's the goal there, rather than a limit?
So would you like a report? I know um, six, seven, eight, that recession time was really a tough time.
Yeah.
So maybe go from there to now of what has been added each year, how it's grown, where it's at now. And then we can decide watching what we've done. So a year, a report of that year maybe.
That information would be really great for us to be able to look at, and then have a conversation about. About what's, what's the level that we're comfortable with.
Okay.
And. Make sure we're saving. For emergency years and.
So would it be helpful to start five years before the recession, so we can see what we're adding and where it went, and then how it dipped down, and then how we're building it back up?
What do you guys think?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Which recession are we talking about?
Seven, eight, the one where you were, people were going home and not getting paid.
Okay.
That one.
Alrighty, that's, that's certainly the big one I remember.
Yeah, that's the only one that really depleted the fund to the point of almost being not properly funded, correct?
Well, two thousand and two, we were pretty close to, but two thousand and eight was definitely the worst one.
Yeah, so if we start five years before, maybe we have to start before too, I don't know, you look at it and see. Yeah, okay. Okay, that easy enough?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, I'll get it started and then we'll just get them all one at a time. Okay, council calendar. Anybody have any issues?
Legislative, so are we getting that or is it going to be next week?
Oh, yeah, next week, he's, we had a postponement because he's in a meeting.
But yeah, uh, Lincoln Schertz was in a meeting on the photo radar item, which he couldn't avoid, but if you got specific questions on um, particular pieces of legislation, we could always go look them up for you.
Well, or Nicole could maybe answer some of them.
She may be able to, she's all, we also had sent out that report, so it might be on there as well, but yeah.
Did you have a question?
Just on the, the food tax one, I'm wondering if we have an idea of how that could impact the city, I s, you know, I've been watching it on the tracker. And if, if next week's fine as well, I'm just curious on that.
Okay.
Cities are not supposed to be harmed at all on that, they're supposed to be left whole. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what they say all the time, right?
That's what they say every year.
That's what they say it all the time.
Every year.
It will not affect the city.
Exactly.
So, if there's any lines to read between, you guys can tell us. Okay, so then the calendar, any questions? Okay. Um, potential future agenda items.
I, I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have one here, it's uh, last. Tuesday, not, I mean, last Tuesday, we had a discussion about council, mayor, former government, also council. Manager, former government, so just one week now, so the, the council has any question about that, or any?
I, I think uh, I'm in favor of putting it on the ballot, my issue would be is, we want to study about what. Form. That looks like, I guess we get to choose what form gets put on the ballot and then the citizens get to choose. If we go that way or not. But that's probably the next, the next thing on my. Um, mind is what version do we want? I can, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, are you thinking a, uh. Conversation, a communication item or?
I think I'll start with that.
Okay.
Communication that details out the, a little bit more than what we had before of the, the different forms. And then we can schedule a study meeting to talk about it.
Put it on a schedule, okay. So for me, for that discussion, I would like them like. This is this one, this is this one on a piece of paper, hard copy, so I can scribble all over. Anybody else have a need for paper?
No.
Okay, just me. I would like paper without.
Yeah, I can have a piece of paper, it's different than my mailbox.
Yeah, so.
And then the, the big question I have is. If mayor, if you, if you wanna take that on, if the citizens approve, you know, if they, if they vote for it, or you?
Well, you have to have an election in a certain amount of time.
So the soonest that we could do a change of government. Would, for the year twenty twenty five, which is when we elect a new mayor anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all set, perfect. Okay, so you wanna schedule that, uh. I'm good with having the discussion, you asked for it, is there anybody else that would like it? I don't know.
I know uh. Legisities and towns, they have a booklet about. The forms of government.
Oh, do they?
So we may not have to.
Do a whole lot of works.
Do a whole lot of work. Talk to them.
See if Cam has something to send over.
I think I can find the last one I got, a few years ago, but forms of government. Legislation hasn't changed since then.
Okay. So do you guys wanna find copies of that?
Sure.
Okay. So I didn't, I have three guesses, let's discuss it. Okay, four. Okay, so let's bring that back as a communication item, and then we can decide what to do with that. Um, any council reports? I always look at Don because he always has, but he's kind of been on.
Mickey's happy.
Mickey's happy, okay.
I got up from other mistakes I made when I left, forgot to tell I T about it.
Oh, whoops.
My phone kind of backed up. Didn't get to answer anything while I was gone, which was good too.
Yes, if, if people have not read their email, if you're going to travel outside of the United States or, I don't know, if you need it out of the state. Yeah, please notify them so they don't turn off your phone and think it's a hacker. I T?
I T.
Is, or somebody just let Nicole know and Nicole will let I T know.
I had let Nicole know, but she didn't.
Didn't get, didn't get it to I T.
My daughter was trying to communicate with me on a text message on the boat and.
Nothing there.
She said, why don't you get these? Suddenly the light dawned.
Ah, okay.
And then Kush sent me a little reminder when I got back.
Okay, so anytime outside of Utah, that works. Okay. That's what they, Nicole just said, Eric just is nodding, yeah, so.
He's gonna leave my phone when I go to Idaho.
Leave it here. Hey.
We had a good audit committee meeting and we're moving forward with uh. With the request for proposals for next year's audit firm.
Okay.
Um, so we had a good report on the, on the most recent audit, are, is that gonna be coming to the council? Anytime soon or? Or, or am I giving the report right now?
Right, yes.
I'm giving the report.
Yeah, it used to be before we set up the audit committee, they would, they would come and they'd do the report to the whole council and then with the audit committee to set up, that's the purpose for that.
In my mailbox is the, um, the reports. Um, from the audit committee, if anyone would like to, to go through those. Uh, they, they gave a really great report on, on our finances and how. We've been checking the finances for the past fiscal year. It was one issue that, that was brought up and, and the. Finance department's making sure that. That sort of thing doesn't happen again, and it was something that should have come. For a budget request that didn't come, so. But uh, overall, it was a very, very good positive report.
Do you know, Lars, if they have a digital copy of that report, they could just email everyone?
Yes.
Drop in the Dropbox thingy, I don't know what you call it.
Yes, you and I have received that.
Okay.
That email and I can, I can.
Just forward it to everybody?
Were there any exceptions on the report?
Exception.
Just that one.
There was one.
Just one?
Yeah. It's good, it's really good.
Yeah.
So they, they're doing a nice job. And it takes not just the finance department, but all the departments, making sure that, that uh. That everything is watched over and taken care of in the right way.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Oh, was there any others?
Yeah.
Do you have one?
Yeah, so. You have a plan and it's uh, gonna get the new company or gonna plan it to have new. A new company to take a look at all.
So we're putting out a request for proposals.
Uh.
So that uh, audit firms, accounting firms can um, re- request to be our. Auditing firms, and uh, next month, the, the audit committee will review the, those proposals.
Hmm.
And, and make a recommendation for the new, the new firm, or, or to keep the old firm, they, they are welcome to. Also submit a proposal.
Good, thank you.
Tended clue, which was great, Emma loved it, so kudos there and um. I really enjoyed the chat with the chief, even virtual, I wish more people would attend them, because I think they're great, it's good information and. Especially for people that may be considering a career in law enforcement.
That's true. So speaking of law enforcement, um, K S L came and did a live in the community at Granger High School last Friday. And Wayne was on there, we had police and. Deb and Deb, Dave were there at the school and literally. When our officer got on and she asked, what is your starting wage, and she said it out loud, Dave starts doing his, he's like. I thought he was gonna quit his job and become a police officer, so we're paying them well and. That was quite impressive, but they were impressed by it, by the wage, so that was good. So. That was a good plus for our police department, hopefully we have just a whole line now wanting to be police officers. No, since Friday?
Maybe, I don't know.
Maybe not since Friday. So. Hey, do we have a need for a closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
Professional competency.
Okay. Anybody wanna make that motion?
Yes, I move that we move to a closed session to discuss professional competency. And uh, we won't have any other items to talk about after that, so after that, we will adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I mean, Councilman, did you? Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Maryling?
Yes.
Washington, Kansas City now.